Thank you. Next presentations, final distance learning plan.
I believe that's me. Share my screen. President Oshinsky, can you give me a thumbs up if it looks okay? All right. Good evening, board, community. I'm here, Dr. Sonal Patel, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, to present our distance learning update for how we will launch learning this fall 2020-2021. It's important to know that our SLUSD Distance Learning Plan values different instructional modes for responsive engaging teaching and learning. At the heart of that is ensuring that we have social and emotional supports for students and families. And that as we engage in this work, we have timely two-way communication and strong partnerships to make sure that the work lands well for everyone that we serve. Using community input from task forces, working groups, surveys, and our engagement events, we worked out the details for a distance learning plan as a result of the July 14 board meeting where the board approved for us to move forward with the distance learning plan. We worked with all of our bargaining groups, as you can see their insignia below, in order to reach agreement on the impacts that these plans would uphold. In doing this work, we're able to now move forward as the negotiations and agreements are complete. You'll see them for ratification on the agenda later today. And one of the first outcomes of this is we can announce our SLUSD calendar update. We heard loud and clear that our staff need time, a little bit of extra time, in order to prepare for distance learning, in order to get materials and technology distributed to students, knowing that as the school year goes on, there are going to be more things that we need. We're going to find that in specialized courses, students might need more materials, but that there are some things we need to ensure get into the hands of students and families right away, like their textbooks, basic school supplies, and their technology. And that we also need to engage in parent and guardian onboarding on what distance learning means and what the roles and responsibilities will be at home. For this reason, the school calendar has moved the start date for students from August 12th to August 17th, giving our staff three more days to prepare. Additionally, August 17, 18, and 19 will be minimum days for all students in San Leandro Unified School District. It's important to note that in the past, our elementary schools had minimum days in order to do assessments, but instead, all schools, all students will have minimum days on the 17th, 18th, and 19th, with the synchronous live teaching portion of the day ending by noon, so that staff can use the afternoon to prepare further for distance learning. I'm about to share with you everything that you should see as a board, as a community, for the folks that are watching, that will be in effect starting August 17th, the day students begin distance learning. First, our students can expect synchronous, which means at the same time, via video conferencing-based instruction time with teacher and fellow students. They should expect to see their classmates, to see their teacher every day. We know that our teachers will use Zoom, Google Meets, even features within Google Classroom, or they might use the video-based conferencing platform that's within the learning management system that I'll share with you in a moment. In addition to synchronous time, live in front of their teachers and specialists and support staff, students will also receive instructional assignments that are asynchronous. That means they can do them not at the same time with other people, and in this case, often they might be engaging in this work on their own independently, perhaps with some support from family, but that the work will be presented in a way that students can engage in it on their own. In addition, it's important to know that for the 2020-2021 school year, attendance is mandatory. All students need to log on, sign in, and participate in distance learning. Teachers will take daily attendance, this is required by the state, based on participation in the live synchronous instruction that happens on our video-based platforms, and by looking at the work completed asynchronously. Teachers will be assigning work and assigning time value to that work that makes up a typical instructional day, and they'll be checking to see if that work is complete, or if the student has logged on in the live format in order to mark attendance. This is important to know because this is an adjustment from the spring where students were held harmless around attendance. Next, student work expectations will be communicated through the learning management system. In lieu of going to a Google folder, like many of our families did during emergency distance learning, all our students and families will log on to the learning management system in order to know what to expect for the day. In grades TK through 5, we will be using CSO, and in grades 6 to 12, we will be using Schoology. Don't worry for our folks out there who also like Google Classroom, that platform can be used in conjunction with Schoology, but we do want to make a one-stop shop for our families who have students in grades 6 through 12 and TK to 5, and we will do that through CSO and Schoology. Training will begin immediately to get everyone to speed on how to use these platforms, and please know that both of these learning management systems have their own video conferencing within them that can be utilized as well. Also, grading resumes. We are back to our normal grading practices that are outlined for you in the syllabi that teachers offer at the beginning of the year, or in the back-to-school night packets, where teachers explain to you how they will communicate regularly on the progress of your student. You should expect, if you're out there listening as a parent, student work to be graded and to receive feedback on your student's progress via our SLUSD progress reports and report cards. Again, grading resumes, and for students in grades 6 to 12, this means it's back to letter grades. We will not be using a pass, no-pass system. Assessments are back. We do not know yet what state and federal assessments will be required, but you can expect your student to participate in some state and district level assessments to mark progress in literacy, math, and English language development. We know already that our English learners will take the LPAC, and that we will use the district star assessments in math and literacy in order to help us reclassify students and to mark students' progress towards acceleration and towards reaching grade-level proficiency in math and literacy. Alongside this, teachers will, of course, conduct their own classroom-level assessments to make student learning visible and to tailor support. Our English language learners, our multilingual learners, will receive daily synchronous with the live teacher ELD instruction, and we will continue to host multilingual support lines for all of our families who need assistance in understanding what their students need to do to be on track for distance learning. Our students with IEPs will receive instructional services from teachers, specialists, and parent educators as driven by the goals in their individualized education program plans. Telehealth, teletherapy, and video-based conferencing will be used in order to relate these services to home. And IEPs, whether they're renewing an IEP, reviewing an IEP, or an initial IEP, will, all that business will be conducted online. For students who are not in the special education program, but families or teachers might be having a concern, and they want to hold SST or a school study team, or perhaps gather together to work out a 504 plan, all of these types of meetings will resume starting August 17, and these meetings will be conducted online. Let me tell you what our prevention and intervention work is about as we enter this fall. We have our team ensuring that there is at-home access to the mental health services that students already receive, and that we have a good system for making referrals even while we're in distance learning, so that we can bring more students on to receiving the mental health services that we have been providing in San Leandro. And every year, we've been increasing the amount of providers that we have, and we want to make sure that the access is there for students who need it. We will also be looking at socio-emotional learning, how to ensure that the lessons and check-ins that teachers and support staff do continue during distance learning. And alongside this, teachers will share weekly their schedule for opportunities to provide support and clarification to students and families. And during this time, we have also been looking at how our support staff can do extra outreach to students who are not connecting to school. We will be creating a multi-tiered plan for when we hear that students are not in attendance. We'll be looking into how we can outreach to assess what the root causes are, so that the plans we put in place to bring them back into the fold are effective, monitored, and can be replicated across the district. Our Teaching, Learning, and Educational Equity Team is busy ordering school supplies and additional resources for at-home learning. Families can expect that they will have school supplies to pick up alongside textbooks and technology that we think are basic to teaching and learning at home, from paper to whiteboards, to whiteboard pens, to crayons, to, of course, all the art supplies you need to make sure that art is also part of distance learning. All that will be available for you to pick up as school begins. They are also working on a series of professional development for staff on best practices and platforms for distance learning, from training on CSO to Schoology to Zoom, to how to really work in socio-emotional learning, to be able to really leverage the inroads we've made into project-based learning. We want to make sure that our teachers and our support staff have the time and expertise in order to do distance learning well. So that professional learning is being developed and will be available to teachers starting August 10, the week before students arrive, and it will continue to be offered throughout the school year in the formats that teachers can access. We are also looking at how to bring our CSEA classified staff into that training as well. The Teaching, Learning, and Educational Equity Department is also looking at new materials for science, history, social science in grades TK to 12, and for grades 6 and 12, new materials for world language. The adoption committees are launching, and they hope to go through a pilot review and recommendation process in which we can order these materials and have them land in San Leandro for students by January. It is our hope that these materials will include quality online access points for students with that, because alongside our one-to-one technology program, it would be helpful for our students to be able to access many of the wraparound resources that exist in textbooks in an online fashion. About technology, we know that all students who needed a Chromebook got one in the spring, but there were many students who chose to use their own tablet or share a device, maybe with a sibling or a parent. And so, while that got us through the spring, we want to make sure that this fall, all students are issued a Chromebook. We want to make sure that they all have a device where they don't have to share, they don't have to wait their turn, but they can be ready to get online when their classroom activity demands, and that the device that they're using meets all the demands of distance learning. If anyone at home is thinking that they have a laptop that they've already bought for their child, and they want them to be able to use it, they will just need to go through a tech check with our tech department to be sure that it's compatible with all our systems. We have ordered new Chromebooks, and so for anyone out there that's listening that has a Chromebook that was issued in the spring and it's not working, don't worry, you can swap it out. And for our TK and K learners, we've purchased more touchscreen Chromebooks so that they can have that touchscreen, because we know that that's important for our youngest learners. We've also ordered headphones if needed, and they will be distributed upon request to students. But it is important to note that our Chromebooks have a really high-quality mic, and they actually work pretty well on their own. But we know that many of you at home are learning alongside other folks, and so sometimes headphones are just a polite necessity, and so we have them available for you if needed. Also, for our students who need access to Wi-Fi, we have purchased hotspots, and we are ready to check them out in order for students to have Wi-Fi access at home, and that process will happen through the school principal. You might be wondering now what to expect in a school day, so let me go through the instructional minutes and general schedule by grade bands in school. In grades TK to K, Transitional Kindergarten and Kindergarten, the state requires 180 minutes of minimum daily instructional time. What we have put forth in our distance learning plan for 2020-2021 is that teachers will engage in 60 minutes of synchronous time online using the video-based platform, and that could happen in whole or small groups. But that English learners would also expect 20 minutes more of daily synchronous ELD time with their teacher, where they can practice listening, speaking, reading, and writing at their level. Please know that with all these plans, students with IEPs may have additional synchronous services that are IEP-driven. Alongside this synchronous time, students will have 120 minutes worth of work that's offline or maybe online, independent activities that are guided by the teacher's daily schedule that is posted in CSO for elementary. Students who fall into special groups or who need intervention will be able to access tutorials online and live support sessions as we build them through the Teaching, Learning, and Educational Equity and Prevention Intervention Department in conjunction with the school principals and mental health and support services. For grades 1 to 3, the daily minimum instructional minutes move up to 230. Accordingly, the synchronous time will be 100 minutes for students in this grade band. And we know that our students, first grade through fifth grade, receive instruction from our art, music, and PE specialists, and those specialists will provide additional synchronous instruction for 20 minutes on most days, alongside another 20 minutes that might show up in the asynchronous activity that could either front-load or reteach or serve a wraparound the lesson that was done live. English learners in grades 1 to 3 will also receive 30 minutes of daily synchronous English language development time with the teacher. And the same comment about students with IEPs, they may have synchronous services as driven by their IEP. The asynchronous time will be 130 minutes. This means that 130 minutes worth of work will be provided vis a vis CSO for students to engage in independently. Some of that work might be completely offline, paper-based, movement, physical activity-based, and some of it might be online. This will include activities from the art, music, and PE specialist. Special groups and students who need intervention, again, will find extra services available at their school site. For grades 4 to 5, the instructional minutes move up to 240 as the daily minimum per state requirement. The synchronous time is at 110, with similar information as I just stated for grades 1 to 3, art, music, and PE providing 20 minutes on most days, and English learners will have 30 minutes of daily synchronous ELD every day with their teacher. The asynchronous activities will be at 130 minutes. And again, students in grades 4 through 5 who need intervention will find those supports on campus as the school year gets rolling, and we are able to identify who needs extra support. This is a recap of the elementary instructional minutes. You can see that the state mandated minimums are displayed under each grade band. You then see the classroom teacher, how much synchronous time they're providing the class. You then see how much asynchronous, independent work is provided for students to complete on their own. You see the ELD synchronous, that means live with the teacher, minutes that are provided to English language learners who qualify for those services. And then you see the specialist time, both the time with the student, and then the time that might be presented in terms of offline activities, the asynchronous time. The elementary schools will be following the same bell schedule. So if you're listening at home, parents, your kiddo needs to be ready at 8:10 in the morning, and you can see dismissal time varies based on whether it's a Wednesday early dismissal like usual or a minimum day dismissal. All of our schools determine their lunchtime and recess, and the specialists, when they come into the classroom, varies, and so those details will be provided to you by your school principal. In grades 6 through 8 at Muir and Bancroft, we are looking at adding two more block days to the already, to the block schedule that our Broncos and Falcons are used to. So you can see the schedule on the right here. On Mondays, students would go to all periods, and each period would be 45 minutes long. There is a zero period, not many students have it, but it is there. You'll notice that on Tuesday through Friday, they move into the block schedule. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they go to periods 1, 3, and 5. And on Wednesday and Friday, students go to periods 2, 4, and that should say 6. I apologize for the error. Zero period happens every day, if you take zero period. You might be wondering about how much of that time in each period is with the teacher and how much is independent. In grades 6 through 12, including the Lincoln Continuation High School at our Alternative Education Center, students will spend one-third of the period in live instruction with the teacher, interacting with their classmates. It could be whole group, including breakout groups or small groups, but it would be a third of the period. So on a, every day, on a Monday, that would be 15 minutes, and on a block day, that would be 30 minutes of each period. And then the asynchronous time would be two-thirds. And so after the synchronous time with the teacher, they would go into their time value assignments that would be completed offline. It's possible that some teachers may start offline first and have students do something and then close with live instruction. Either way, whether it's synchronous first or asynchronous, the ratio was one-third to two-thirds time. And we believe that would give students a chance to process, do work, and then check back into the next period in order to stay engaged, but also to not have screen fatigue. At our Lincoln Alternative Education Center, it is the same ratio of one-third to two-thirds. At the Lincoln Alternative Education Center, the Continuation High School, students are recouping credits rapidly. And so what was proposed and agreed upon in the negotiations was a block schedule, which would be new for Lincoln, and it is similar to the middle school schedule, with students seeing all their teachers on Monday and being able to have a good check-in for the week. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they would only go to periods 1, 3, 5, and that would make the block longer. And then on Wednesdays and Fridays, they would go to periods 2, 4, and 6. Lincoln students start an hour later, they start at 9 o'clock, and they end at 2:15, and this is possible with, at an alternative education center. We look forward to working with the Lincoln School teachers to see how the schedule works, and also to hear, because we know that there were concerns about the schedule, to see if there are changes that need to be made. It's important to remember that our Lincoln Continuation High School is the most flexible of all our schools. We have to do things alternatively and creatively for students, and so we look forward to working with the staff to make that possible. In grades 9 to 12 at San Leandro High School, the staff and district have worked together to create a 3x3 model. And in a 3x3 model, students get to focus on just three courses at a time. Because these courses are usually year-long courses, it helps to sort of break them up and not have to hold six full-year courses throughout, in a distance learning format, where you're having, you know, not as much contact in a daily way with your peers and with your teachers. So in the 3x3 model, Monday through Friday, students have three periods a day, and during one quarter, they complete a semester's worth of work. So during the first quarter, students would take the classes or courses that are assigned to periods 1, 3, and 5. During the second quarter, they would take the courses that are assigned to periods 2, 4, and 6. Then the third quarter, they would go back to those first-quarter courses. And the fourth quarter, they'd go back to those second-quarter courses. If students take a zero period, they will have it throughout the year, every day. You can see that this allows for just three courses a day for most students, and that they would be 90-minute blocks, with one-third of the instruction being synchronous with the teacher, and two-thirds being asynchronous, completed independently. And we know with our high school students that independently might be online with their friends in chatting, chatting while they're doing it. Families, you might be wondering about some communication that you still need to hear about in order to how to start, in order to know how to start the year. We want to alert you to the communications that you should be looking for from your principal. Regarding distributions, you should be looking for communication on how to pick up textbooks that will be loaned to you to use at home during distance learning. How to pick up technology, whether it's swapping out an older device, getting a new device for the first time, you'll need to know when to pick that up. You'll also be receiving a package of school supplies that have basics in them, all students, whether they're in TK, whether they're in 12th grade. There's additional supplies that are being considered for students and purchased already for students who are in elementary and students who are in specialized programs, students with IEPs. So please look for communications around those school supply pickup times, and then, again, those specialized materials. It's possible that once school gets rolling, we'll be more aware of additional materials that students might need. We are looking forward to surveying our staff and community to find out what those might be. So please look for pickup times and distribution times to continue, and not just to be right before school starts or during the first week of school. We might have to renew supplies throughout the coming months. Those distributions and that information should be coming to you at the end of this week, if not early next week. Also, key information on meal service program changes. For example, during the week of August 10, while our staff is back, there is adjustment to the meal service program. So if you are using the meal service program, please stay abreast of changes by looking, checking Parent Square and looking online and looking at information from your principal. There is also data confirmation that's required when every student starts the school year. Even if you've been with us for many years, we need you every year to fill out our acceptable use policies so that you can use our technology to update your personal information and basically give us some facts about shifts that might not have shown up unless you were newly enrolled, so that we can get the year going. So please look for that. That's all done through Ares Portal. Also, our principals will be sharing not only school schedules, class schedules for grades 6 through 12, but also classroom assignments with you for grades TK through 5. So if you're wondering, who's my child's teacher? What schedule do they have? What courses do they get into? None of that is possible until you do your data confirmation through the Ares portal, so please be sure to get that done. If you need any help with that, send us an email. We're here to walk you through it. Also, look for engagement opportunity information, whether it's coffee chat, those will still be going on. Back-to-school nights usually happen in September, but we want to make sure that you stay engaged. Our Teaching, Learning, and Educational Equity Department is hyper-focused right now on preparing our staff for quality distance learning, but please know that they are also working in conjunction with the Family and Student Support Services Department to also create engagement opportunities for you around parent learning and parent support that is much needed for you as you support your students at home during distance learning. So we're thinking about you, and we want you to keep an eye out for communications. That concludes my presentation. Are there any comments or questions?
Justice Tate, I know you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Dr. Patel, for the presentation. I was going to ask about school schedules, but you covered that, but I do have a question about distribution. So I'm sure there is a system in place for families that are not picking up materials, textbooks, et cetera. So how will that be handled as far as us following through to ensure that they pick up their materials?
Yes, thank you. So with all of our distributions, we'll be able to have a sense of who picks up materials, right? The Chromebooks and textbooks are actually checked out to students, so we'll definitely be cross-checking which students on our rosters have not gotten the materials and, you know, between our parent facilitators, our staff, our educational services support team, and teachers, you know, communicating with families, asking them to come and get those materials. We also had looked into mailing materials at home for some students, and so that is something that we'll always consider as well. And even in the spring, we were doing drop-offs, whether it was students who were living in shelters or had trouble due to transportation to coming to our pickup, so we'll engage in all those strategies.
Thank you.
Justice, Josie Perola.
Yeah, I hadn't talked to Mike a couple of days ago, and he said that you guys were thinking about doing some kind of programs for parents on how to help your kid, you know, in school. Has that been put together or no?
Yes, our, we do have an outline of the kinds of trainings, and also, beyond just trainings, also spaces for parents to come and get together and support one another and share how they're getting through. So we do have ideas of what those sessions could look like. And our first goal right now is getting our teachers and our support staff trained, because they're arriving back on August 10, and then we'll shift into making those parent opportunities available. But I know that our principals are also out there thinking about what they're going to do on their sites as well. So in conjunction to what we'll do centrally, they'll be making their own plans of how to host that support space. And we have a lot of parents who I'm sure want to support each other in leading that. And we have a lot of parents who I'm sure want to support each other in leading that work. Yeah.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Hi, I just had a quick question on your first, on the very first slide. There was, and, and throughout, there was the comment about attendance being taken by synchronous teaching, but also asynchronous. And I'm wondering how that works if, if, does that mean that if they don't do their homework or classwork, they're also gonna affect their attendance?
What that means is, well, if they don't do their homework or classwork, or I should say their classwork, it's gonna affect their grade, right? And their participation. But there's, basically, we check attendance for the day in elementary and then we check attendance by period in, in, in high school and middle school. And so in elementary, you can check the, where, it's most likely that the teacher will be checking the attendance, you know, using Ares by seeing if the student participates in the first live instructional moment of the day. But it is possible that there could be a scenario where a student isn't able to make that live moment because, you know, something happens with the computer or something happens, even though they have Wi-Fi, it, it crashes. We all know these issues. And so there is the ability to show that you've maybe answered a survey or, you know, completed a certain amount of work and uploaded it later, even though you missed that live moment online, to show attendance. And so we're working right now under the guidance of CDE to figure out what those alternative solutions could be to show attendance on the part of a student in case they miss that live moment. But ideally, it would all happen through that live moment.
And just one more question. Do we, do we know of any families in our district that don't have an email or a login to Ares?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so I, I believe in the spring I shared that, that we are able through Parent Square, you know, know how many families are what's called non-contactable. And we were down to under 60 families out of nine, you know, over 9,000 that are non-contactable. And what's really helpful for us is we know who's non-contactable. But we have, so that means we know like their address, maybe their caregiver's number. We have something about, right, these folks who are non-contactable. And so for those families in the spring, we were able to do home visits or work around to figure out how to communicate with them. We do have support staff through the Prevention and Intervention Department, our TNC coordinator, some of our outreach coordinators who are hyper-focused on, on that work. And just as I'm talking, I, I just got a text, my Teaching and Learning and Educational Equity Department wants me to know, yes, we are doing a parent series and we want to start by August 19th. So they want to make sure I get that in there.
Thank you. That's all.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yeah, thank you for all the work you've done. You know, you've put a lot of thought into this. My concern is that, you know, this is a new, new road we're on, a new path. And as you're, as we're going along, can you update us on how it's going? How many students are not able to reach, what the attendance looks like compared to the regular school year so that we can have that information in real time? So maybe a month in, we get enough it on how things are going. Did you get that? I know I have an unstable connection today.
Yes, it is a little bit unstable, but I'm thankful that you're talking slowly, so I think I caught it all. So all good, yes, I, absolutely, we can provide updates. I think, you know, it, launching is one thing, it's, it's an intensive effort right now, launching. I know the team right now is, you know, they're planning PB, they're launching adoption committees, they're trying to get materials out, ordering supplies or planning training, you know, there's so much, there's a lot happening still. So amidst all that work, we know that once sort of students arrive, we will be putting in our systems around not only tiering intervention, but using our data, right? Our data analysis to know who's connecting, who's not. And then the important work of not just knowing who's connecting and who's not, but finding out why. And then putting in the solutions, right? And so we'll definitely be updating you, we can do it monthly via board report or through presentations like this on how our students are doing, how our families are feeling. And then also the good work that our teachers and support staff are surely gonna do, I can already predict it. You know, I, I know that they're gonna do amazing things to, to reach across the divide and connect. And so we want to highlight that work as well.
I actually would, I would love to see some of those things highlighted of where teachers are going above and beyond and being creative and thinking outside the box. That would be great stuff to share with, with not just us, with the community.
Absolutely, there's a lot of that in San Leandro, we're really proud, we're really proud of our folks here.
Trustee Sheridan.
So now I'd like to thank you for your update. I'm sure, you know, there's a ton of parents, sure the audience that's listening is thankful to hear the information. I know they've been waiting for it and anxious. My question is around distribution. I know that in the spring, district did a great job on rolling out laptops and getting them out with these drive-through pickups. I know all spring and summer long, food services has been just knocking it out of the park three days a week, and I know that they're using this drive-up model. Are we looking at employing the same type of model for the supplies and not leaving it up to individual sites where some may opt to, oh, come into the multipurpose room or something like that to where we, you know, with, especially with the surge we're seeing in the county?
Yes, so we learned a lot from watching our incredible food services department do what they've been doing. They have been non-stop all summer. And the Chromebooks, I think we, we set the model there. And so it's important to know that even when our administrators were doing site-based distribution, because after we stopped doing it in the San Leandro High School parking lot for Chromebooks, they actually did it on their campuses, that they still use that sort of Chromebook or food services model. And so their distribution models will model that model of basically contactless, you know, drive-through handing of materials. We know that there are families who don't come in cars, that they will be walking up as they do with food services and as they did during the Chromebook pickup. And so we will be sure that they have the protocols in place, working with Rocky Maderos. That's one of the first people that they're calling in, in, in order to make sure that we have the cones set up and the spacing. Absolutely, we're not looking at having folks enter the building.
Yeah, no, great, great job, I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Aguilar.
Yeah, just wanted to thank Sinal and Cabinet and team for this amazing presentation and all of the amazing behind-the-scenes work that happened. I can't imagine how many hours you spend in discussions. And also a major thank you, I mean, to our teachers because of all of the union discussions happening to make a lot of the background work happen. Lots of layers of things to make it work. And I want to second Trustee Gonzalez's idea of having monthly updates. I think all around, board reports during board meetings. And I see some area possibly in celebrating schools' meetings to hear all of the good work that's happening at each of our sites regarding the situation that we're in. But otherwise, I'm very appreciative and I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need to address, I, I see the members of the audience have their hands raised, we won't be calling on you. However, we want to hear your questions, please reach out to communications@slusd.us and we'll get your questions answered for you. And I have a question for you, Sinal, regarding volunteers. When I was getting my signatures, I have a neighbor who is a former math, bilingual math teacher who would like to volunteer as a tutor. Where can people go to volunteer?
Yes, so I think it's important, we have a lot of folks who want to help out and, and, you know, create connections. In, in terms of being able to support in online tutoring, right, which is what it would be, we're not able to do or, or support anyone in doing things in person unless they're working through sort of their own agency or, or nonprofit. I think it would be good for them to connect with the school and the principal that's, you know, near their school. And they would have to, you know, engage with us in the volunteer clearing process, right? To make sure that we're up to speed on being sure that they have all their papers in order for us to be able to have them volunteer safely with students.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Sinal.